Okay, good evening, welcome. Today is Thursday, August 12th, 2021, and it is 6:30 PM. And this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Independent School District 191 School Board. Welcome to everybody, welcome to those of you that are attending this evening, presenting and such. And then, thank you for anybody watching this at home. Director Hume, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll start off with approval of tonight's agenda. If I could have a motion, please to do so.
Cell moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Webb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Still used to real comments.
And the motion passes. We'll move to the information section of our meeting tonight. So we'll begin with a budget update based on state allocation. Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, will be speaking. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. As you are aware, the Minnesota Legislature did have a special session. And so I just wanted to share with you what we've learned about the 191 allocation. And so Minnesota Department of Education, to give us an estimate of our allocation based on that special session of the passing of the Education Finance Bill, they used an adjusted average daily membership, or ADM, to base our allocation for fiscal year '22, and the number was 7,634. So 7,634. For fiscal year '23, the adjusted ADM that MDE used was 7,327. And so based on that enrollment for those two fiscal years, the per pupil funding for fiscal year '22, they allocated across the state was 2.45% on that per pupil. For fiscal year '23 was 2%. And so for fiscal year '22, 191 would expect an additional $1,740,000. And for fiscal '22, $2,778 and some change. So at the revised budget presentation in January 2022, we will include all of the MDE runs for all of our allocations. And that concludes that report about the special session allocation.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Battle. Any questions or comments before we move to the next agenda item? Okay, I thought you were indicating something else. All right. Then the next item on agenda tonight, under the information section, is to learn more about our Virtual Academy enrollment, staffing, and programming. Speaking will be Don Leek, Principal on Special Assignment for Virtual Academy. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. It's been a very busy summer. I'm trying to update a few things here. We're going to go on the new timeline for Virtual Academy. And we're going to talk a little bit about enrollment, staffing, student support services, and the professional development for the summer, and what the school day is going to look like a little bit. Again, our goal has been and will continue to be to provide really high-quality online experience for our students. So our timeline, obviously, October 26th, which is two weeks from today, we will be here at Diamond Head handing out our devices, along with materials and other things that teachers are preparing for students to pick up. So we will also have Kimmet Mueller photography here for the students and families that would like to have pictures. And we're going to be right out in the Commons area for most of the day. Workshop week, you would know about that. We will be doing virtual open houses on Wednesday, September 1st, starting at about 4 o'clock and finishing up around 6:00. And then obviously, September 8th is the start of school. Correct. For as of August 2nd, our enrollment is at 319 students. Today's report said 329. So it does that. It does a little up and then a little down, and a little up. So we've been right around 320 kids since about May. There's the breakdown, and as long as the K-5, we have eight FTEs. This is part of reallocating the staffing from the elementary schools and some ESSR funds that you so kindly granted to us. 75 students in 6 through 8, the middle school program, we have four FTEs there. That's also ESSR funds. And then right around 111, 9 through 12 graders, which is 5.4 FTEs for us. There's some reallocation out of Burnsville High School for that. And we also received some ESSR funds to support the elective programming. We have one special education staff member assigned to our school and one EL staff member assigned to our school, English and Order staff members. The number from August 2nd, we have 29 open enrolled students coming into the district to be in our Virtual Academy. So summer PD. The K-5 staff has been really digging into some instructional strategies and some programming. And we are working with the Curriculum and Instruction Department to look at some of those new types of programs that we're going to need to be able to teach what we're going to teach online, that we don't normally have for our regular, everyday classrooms. We will also be implementing a new social-emotional learning program. And we will have win time starting day one. So we will be supporting students from the first day of school. 6 through 12 has been, again, online instructional tools. They are also putting in an SEL program. We have that set up and ready to go. First part of the day for the students will be advisory for them in the middle school. And we will be working to transition the students to be independent learners. So I'll get into that in the next slide. That's the next slide. Okay, so elementary school. All of our elementary classes will have synchronous time every day. Literacy, mathematics, probably a little bit of small group work for students. Win time, obviously. And those things will work. There'll also be asynchronous time for students, like independent reading time, math, facts. I don't remember the top of my head what the program is called, but there's a math program the kids go online to do. It kind of advances that elementary is a little bit on the opposite of the middle school in that we're very conscious of how much screen time we're asking the kindergartners and first graders to do. It's really hard to keep those kids really focused for the entire day on the screen. So as they get a little bit older, 4th and 5th grade, of course, then they can get a little bit better focused, so they might be on a little bit longer. Two hours is our minimum. Right now, the way the schedule's looking, it's planned full class periods, about two and a half hours. And there'll probably be some other half an hour or so of small group or maybe 45 minutes, depending on what your needs are. Middle school, we'll start off, 6th graders, about two hours of synchronous time. And the rest of their day would be asynchronous. 7th and 8th graders, about an hour. We're kind of thinking about 30 minutes for each core class for a small mini lesson, and then some asynchronous work. And really, working to transition the students to be independent learners and asynchronous by about the middle of 8th grade, so that they're ready for the go-to the high school program, which is completely asynchronous. There will be some times, like in Spanish class, where they have to take a test and they have to speak and listen. So there'll be some synchronous pieces here and there at the high school, but for a majority of it, it's going to be asynchronous. And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Principal Leek. Any questions or comments from board members? Director Connaught, go ahead.
And win stands for?
What I need.
Oh, okay.
Other questions or comments? I have a few things I'd like to...
Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, once the school year has started, will they allow students who are currently in person, if they decided they wanted to change to the Virtual Academy? Would that be possible to do?
Absolutely, I think so. We're using the same process, the same goals as last year. We want the kids to be in school with us, whether it's at a school or in the Virtual Academy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions? Well, that was sort of one of the things I was going to ask, so that's good. But going back to the slide 5, I think it is, on enrollment and staffing, just a couple of clarifications. So when you list numbers here, 133 K through 5, for instance, is that... Well, they would be full-time students. But I know when we get up to the high school, we were talking about having some classes you could take to supplement in your normal term schedule. So the 111, let's go with that then, the 9 to 12. Is that 111 kids spending their whole entire day in Virtual Academy? Or is there some mix of that?
That's 111 full-time Virtual Academy students.
Okay.
I believe there's maybe 10 that will also be taking a supplemental course at the high school.
Okay.
We have another 25-ish students that will be full-time Burnsville High School students taking a supplemental course with the Virtual Academy.
Okay. 29 open enrollment students, what does that mean?
That means they do not live in our school district.
Really? Fantastic. I mean, I didn't want to jump to conclusions, that's all right, great, yeah.
We are seeing students from La Sure.
Interesting.
And Brooklyn Park, and Brooklyn Center, yes.
Any follow-up or idea how they learned about it?
You know, we haven't gotten that far yet. We're really busy trying to get everything set up and ready to go.
That's fine, I would encourage us to... And that segues to, I mean, wondering if we have thought beyond in the next year or whatever, kind of what, how are we going to go about promoting this? Or, you know, the focus on it, et cetera. I understand we're just at this time trying to get it out of the gate with our student body, but that's fantastic. 30-some, or almost 30 students coming from somewhere else. The other thing I was going to... I actually think that might be it. Good. Oh, I think the last would just be a point I'd like to make. Again, I say this every time we talk about this, but I just want to repeat that, you know, again, this is not, like was before, where we're just responding to the necessity to have some online instruction for COVID. This is an entirely different thing. And we're looking forward to building on this and it becoming, you know, quite a new product, a shiny product we can offer.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda tonight, under information, is to have an open facilities update. Dr. Battle, Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
Thank you, Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. I'll start with the overview and review of our commitments, our purpose and commitment, and then Lisa Ryder will continue the presentation. So the first slide, you will see tonight, we will give you an update on River Ridge Education Center. We still have the closing set for August 18th, 2021. Then we'll move on to Cedar School, the remodeling of Diamond Head Education Center, and just give an update of the other open facilities, Metcalf Middle School, Sutrel Elementary, and Marion W. Savage Elementary. Next slide. Since the beginning of our open facilities process, we have identified a clear purpose and a commitment. And just to make sure, we review that tonight. We want to maximize the use of these open facilities, as they are still our properties, looking at what are our district needs and what are opportunities for community partnerships, with the goal of leveraging all of our resources efficiently and effectively as possible. And you see there the commitments we have adhered to throughout this process. So students are always a central focus in offering the best learning environments, engaging our community in this process, and being very open and transparent. And so once again, tonight, we're giving more information, and we will continue to give these updates so that you, as well as the community, are understanding the communication and decision-making process. Once again, the cost-effective use of our facilities and resources, and adhering to our equity goals, that we do not want to create inequities of racially and socio-economically identifiable schools. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. On April 8th, Transwestern secured a purchase offer, which the board authorized, the signing of a purchase agreement on April 8th. And a purchase agreement prepared by our attorney was then signed by the board chair and board clerk, including three addendum. Our closing is set for August 18th, 2021, and this will then finalize the sale of River Ridge Education Center. As part of this process, our BEST program has moved, all of the boxes, furniture, and equipment has been moved over. And we are in progress on the following items. Our rack construction is the company working on the renovation of some spaces. The sidewalk repair and addition has, you can see, is already worked on and near completion. Our transportation flow and signage, we've had the transportation company over here a couple of times, just to kind of figure out that flow and how's that going to work and what signage is needed. And you can see the entry signage above door 2 is complete. Again, the map is shown here, just to kind of give you a sense of exactly where our BEST program will be housing. And so every room that you see with a highlighted yellow is space that they would either be utilizing and/or possibly storing some equipment. You can see there's a small red line right below the room that's in the center that says 2133. That small red line is where the new doors were added, and you'll see a photo of that in a moment. So the photo on the left is the entry door number 2, and you can see the signage above it. The middle picture is the photo of the main office for our BEST program, which is located right next to the Dakota Room in our building. And the third picture off to the right, that is the red line on the previous map. And that shows the two doors that have been added with the wall being built there to separate our early childhood program from our BEST programming. These photos on this slide indicate the work that's in progress on our restrooms that needed some resizing. And then you see, the second picture over is a photo of the room that has been created for our curriculum library for storage. The next picture over is that of our tech area, which has storage that has been just updated. And our third picture, or fourth picture over to the right there, that is a picture of the space within our custodial storage area that has been dedicated for special education needs. Moving away from the conversation around BEST, talking a little bit more about Cedar School. 917, Intermediate 917, has a current lease that expires on June 30th of 2022. There is an additional 31,658 square feet that is currently used by BOSS that they are interested in expanding into. And that would mean that there would be a total of 53,287 square feet that could be rented by 917, should we decide that our BOSS program could move to another location. They have visited, our team of BOSS staff and principal have visited the Marion W. Savage location and have reviewed it for its needs, identifying what might need to be renovated and/or modified for their use. So we have that information gathered at this time. 917 has indicated their interest in exploring that continuation of the partnership we currently have with expansion. They did tour, 917 did tour Sutrel Elementary School as well. They did find that it had potential, but it was not the preferred location by them. And just a note regarding a calculation I've done to identify where is that magic point where we cross over, where our debt that is remaining, or the debt that is attributable to the Cedar Building has been paid off by the rental income we've received over the last 10 years, plus whatever might be generated in the future. So making some assumptions, depending upon if they were to rent more space or not, we're looking at February of 2025 or February of 2026, when our debt payments that we have made bring us to a point where the portion that is attributable to the Cedar Building will have paid off our debt there, and everything else there forward would then come into the general fund. This is a slide that shows you the map of the Cedar School. And just, this was originally developed when we first began our lease with Cedar. So on the right-hand side, there's a lighter blue color compared to the left-hand side, which is more of the greenish. And so that's kind of that, the space that is currently leased out to 917 is on the right. And the rest of the space that you see is identified in the green used currently by BOSS. The blue at the very top is custodial. And that square footage is not included in the numbers we're giving you. This slide for Diamond Head Education Center has not been changed, except for maybe a little formatting, but the content is the same as it was previously. As previously reported, the considerations still stand, and so we just wanted to lay this out again. When we talk about Metcalf Middle School, we have currently use of our school there by open door every Tuesday through September of 2021. They have requested an annual agreement that would take them out another year. So they're interested in that process, if that were something doable. In fact, they'd be looking at potentially additional space as well, somewhere between 12,000 to 15,000 square feet. So that's in discussion at this point to understand their full needs and what that might mean for custodial needs. And we'll bring forward more information as we learn more there. We do know that there is unused equipment in the food and nutrition area, that instead of it sitting there not being used, we would like to use it in other spaces. So that is being moved to current active locations, so that that can be utilized. It does mean that the kitchen would not be functional as a prep area for food moving into the future without some additions or modifications. And in addition, on each of these, we are fielding calls of interest as they come. So as people express interest, we usually begin with a tour, show them the space. And at this point in time, with regard to Sutrel, for example, we do not have any brokerage services assigned for that purpose. We're basically handling those inquiries internally. And our facilities coordinator is continuing efforts to lease the space and explore partnerships with our community partners. This is true also for Marion W. Savage. And as I mentioned earlier, Marion W. Savage has been previewed by our BOSS leadership, with that list of possible renovations being identified. Should BOSS move its programming to Marion W. Savage, the full building would not be fully needed. So there would allow for additional storage or staff space as necessary for other programming or district-wide needs, or potentially as additional rental space by another organization. And let's see, the next slide is about next steps. So as we think about what's next, we will continue to implement preparation for the inclusion of BEST at Diamond Head Education Center. We're excited that it's so close to being complete, and so we're looking forward to that. We will continue to hold discussion with Intermediate 917. We noted that they sent a letter to their member districts indicating their desire. So it's communicated. And in October, we anticipate contacting our legislators to prepare for that legislative exemption, that we are seeking for future sale proceeds. And it is anticipated that we will again pick up these discussions in January with developers for possible development of Metcalf Middle School and Diamond Head Education Center outlets.
And that concludes our report on open facilities.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments at all?
Is the goal, I love all the work being done with BEST as a goal for it to be ready and open by start of school year?
Yes. We're still on target.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
So are we're sure that the BEST students and the young childcare are separated, and there's not that much interaction in that way, correct?
Yep. With the addition of that building and the two doors, and then the other end of it also has doors. So everything has doors to separate that. And the space has been well-planned by the department.
Okay. All right, thank you again for the presentation. I do want to say, you know, I appreciate the regular cadence of this and would like to see us continue doing that, just to keep informed. Thank you. All right, we'll move on now, again, in our information section, a report about superintendent goals. Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. The document you see before you has two additional goals that were added after the discussion with the board in a workshop. And so just to quickly review the four goals. So one is to improve my competency in moving toward adaptation and cultural competency as described by the Intercultural Developmental Continuum. And that means linking knowledge of my culture and other cultures to increase the skill of shifting perspectives and to link my cognitive ability to generate cultural appropriateness in my affect and behavior. The second goal I have is to increase knowledge and to strengthen connections with you, the ISD 191 board members, so that we may have a highly collaborative and respectful relationship. The new goal, third one, is by January 2022, provide leadership for the 191 roadmap, which is our strategic directions and dashboard, to receive feedback, complete a draft for directors, staff, students, families, and community to review. As you are aware, we kept our wonderful mission, Future Ready, Community Strong. You did approve a new vision as well as core values. The fourth goal is by April 2022, present a goal-setting system for the executive leadership team. And those would be the members that are direct reports to me for the purpose of professional development about progress towards meeting their individual goals that will be aligned to the district-wide goals. And with that, I do ask you for your consideration with the additional goals.
Board members, comments, questions? We kind of worked through this already a bit in workshop. Go ahead, Dr. Hume. Director Hume.
I've been promoted. No, I think these are broad enough to cover a lot, but specific enough that they can be measured. So that's what I look for in goals, so I appreciate that. My one question is, on goal three, it ends with the word "and", is that just a typo, or is there going to be more to that sentence? I'm guessing it's a typo.
It should be "and provide input".
Oh, okay. Glad I asked.
I wondered about that.
I missed that until just now, and I was like, oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And provide input, you said. And provide input, you said.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
And I agree, I think those all sound very good. Like you said, just broad enough, but also detailed enough to let us know what you really
Any other questions or comments? Good, thank you very much. We'll now move to, begin with Dr. Battle, Superintendent Report for tonight.
Okay, once again, thank you Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. Who put this agenda together? So thank you Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. I want to touch on a couple of timely items tonight. First, many of us watched the Olympics over the last couple of weeks. And although she didn't play during the games, we are so proud of Burnsville High School graduate Tori Dixon, who was an alternate for the U.S. Women's Volleyball Team. Tori has had an incredible professional volleyball career and will have a chance to celebrate her accomplishments when she's inducted into the Burnsville High School Hall of Fame this fall. In addition, and please excuse if I mispronounce her last name, Abby Balak, a two thousand and twenty graduate of Burnsville High School, will be competing in the upcoming Paralympic Games in Tokyo as a member of the U.S. Women's Wheelchair Basketball Team. Abby has already a world championship gold medal, and I will be watching and following her as she tries to add an Olympic gold to her trophy case, and I encourage others to do so as well. Congratulations to both Abby and Tori. Also want to take this opportunity to share some back-to-school information, and I want to say I'm very grateful for the professionalism, the expertise, and teamwork of our school and department leaders. Earlier this week, many of them met again, as they did throughout the last eighteen months to plan for both the expected and unexpected as we start the school year. Families, please note that the school year starts on Wednesday, September eighth, with some exceptions related to helping younger students feel more comfortable and welcome at their schools. Please remember for many of our first graders, as kindergartners, they may not have experienced the full five-day in-person experience. And as usual, the incoming kindergartners are coming from very different preschool experiences. So we want to make sure we have a really comprehensive welcome and orientation for them. In addition, as you heard earlier from the Virtual Academy, us, all of our schools will have back-to-school open houses and other events scheduled in the coming weeks. So please watch for that information. I know our principals and other staff are doing everything they can to strengthen connections with families. So important back-to-school information can be found on our website at www.isd191.org. I once again encourage families, please look there and watch for detailed information from the schools as staff is starting to return. Thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the Board Member Reports section of tonight's meeting. This being the first meeting of the month, again, these are not committee and/or assignment role reports, but any individual activity that you'd like to report on. Any reports tonight? Yes.
Just make a, oh. Just like to make a comment about the National Night Out. That was really awesome, a good experience for me. I enjoyed it and appreciated it and turned out well. We even added another site, we added my building to, to the National Night Out, and it was a big hit. So the officer that I was riding with came along and it was really good.
Good, thank you.
I can add to that because I was also at that event, and I was able to ride along with the Assistant Fire Chief and the Deputy City Manager that evening. We went to, I think, four different gatherings. It was a lot of fun. I think people appreciated having school board representation there. And at the last one, we were at a townhome complex where the Assistant Fire Chief led a bicycle parade with all the kids that lived there. So that was kind of a fun way to end the night. He had his lights flashing and the siren, and it was a fun way to end the night. So I'm glad we were able to participate this year.
Any others? All right, well, maybe, I don't know, when does Fire Muster happen? Will we have, by the time we do this again next time, are we going to all talk about Fire Muster?
Fire Muster.
Was it after? Yeah, okay, so it'll be after this probably. All right, we'll get there. Eventually, yes. All right, that then concludes the information section of tonight's meeting. We'll move to the business meeting, beginning with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. So I will ask with tonight's consent agenda if there's any item that a board member wishes to remove for separate consideration. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion on the consent agenda as it is published.
Still moved.
Moved. Director Chester, second?
Second.
Second, and Director Connor. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any ayes? No, the motion passes unanimously. We will now move to new business for the evening. To begin with, the first item in front of us tonight is a recommendation for health and safety measures for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year. Presenting tonight's recommendation will be again Dr. Battle, Superintendent.
Chair Miller and Directors of the Board, tonight I am recommending that the school board require mask-wearing indoors for staff, students, and visitors. I am making this recommendation after consulting with our COVID nineteen Advisory Committee and after reflecting on recommendations from the Centers for Disease Control, CDC, and the Minnesota Department of Health, MDH, that all people wear masks inside schools as well as our current community health conditions in Dakota and Scott Counties. Both counties are in high transmission for the COVID nineteen Delta variant. Our goal is to be able to continue offering full in-person learning to all students this fall and throughout the school year while also providing a Virtual Academy option for those families who choose online learning. With rising case rates and the increased contagiousness of the Delta variant, including among vaccinated people, I believe it is prudent to add a layer to our mitigation efforts at this time. The mask requirement I am recommending applies to anyone three years of age or older, regardless of vaccination status. Staff and I are reviewing the guidance from the Minnesota State High School League that we received this morning and will work with our Activities and Athletics COVID Advisory Committee to bring forward recommendations because we have practice for fall sports beginning Monday. The spread of coronavirus and the variant on our communities is fluid, and as health conditions change, I will review the data and make adjustments as needed. As you know, the past year, we had many pivots. As the coronavirus data, information, and guidance changed, we also changed our learning models. We demonstrated great adaptation and flexibility, and I cannot thank my staff, students, and families for their flexibility and commitment to the health and safety of our students and our staff. With that, you have before you my recommendation that the Board of Education adopts a resolution for health and safety measures for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year. Chair Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Resolution as stated is published in our agenda. So at this time, I will take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
Still moved.
Moved by Director Hume, a second?
Second.
Second, and by Director Werbe. Now I will open it up for questions or comments by board members.
I'll make a comment. Thank you. Thank you to you for all the work that you and your staff have done over these last seventeen months to continue to deliver the best possible education for the students in our district while also balancing the need to do everything we can to protect the health and safety of our students, our staff, and our community. I know this is not an easy decision. I know this is a controversial decision. I also know it's the right decision. So thank you.
I second that.
Yes. I'd also like to add to that, the, the, the primary goal is to ensure our students get in person, as much in-person learning and direct education as possible. And so I know that a lot of the analysis and decisions that are being made and recommended have that as the top priority.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I have a few things. If I would, I'd ask Bernadette Bean if you would mind coming forward. I just have a couple clarifications for those watching or don't know. Actually, Bernie Bean is our school nurse. We have drawn extensively on her knowledge and interaction with the health community in our district, in our counties specifically around here. So a couple of quick questions for my benefit and the listening audience benefit. I think it's fair to say that we're in this position because of the Delta variant, right? I mean, if we had, we're dealing with COVID as we were before the Delta variant sort of popped up on the scene, probably wouldn't have had to be discussing having a mask mandate going into the fall. Is that a fair assumption?
That, that is a fair assumption. A couple data points that help support what that means. When I was here last time, June seventeenth, giving you a report, our numbers looked different. Actually, the seven-day average trend for Dakota County positive cases, this week has been sixty-one positive cases a day. That's the same rate that they saw on May nineteenth. But there's a big difference. On May nineteenth, we saw the rates going down drastically, and now we're seeing them go up very rapidly. The other thing is we have the Delta variant. May nineteenth, that was in very low, low circulation. And now that is the majority of the cases when they sequence them out to determine that that is the variant that's going on right now. We do know that the viral load is higher than the other COVID variants, and that means that it's more easily transmitted. So that is a correct assumption, Chair Miller.
And, you know, not turning everybody into doctors in the room, but from what we're told, these variants have a life cycle or a spiking cycle, so to speak, right? So they tend to ride it through the increase in rate and then decrease again. Is that typically what has happened with these variants?
What I've heard for this variant, and COVID's doing what it's supposed to do. It's a virus, and it naturally will mutate and change, but it's still a novel virus for humans. And what they are predicting and what we've seen across the world with the Delta variant, it rises very fast and high, but then it drops really fast also.
Okay. And then my understanding is that if a person, child, teacher, whatever, is vaccinated and is found to have close proximity or close contact with a, a positive occurrence of the, the virus, if they're vaccinated, they do not need to be quarantined or leave school for fourteen days or whatever it is, right? Correct?
Correct. The definition of a close contact has not changed. That's still, the operational definition is still, if you are in the exposure, the presence of an infectious COVID individual, less than six feet for more than fifteen minutes cumulatively in a twenty-four-hour period, you would be classified as a close contact. The quarantine option, if you are without symptoms, is not applicable if you have been vaccinated fully, you've had positive disease in the last ninety days from that exposure, or in the situation of students, the new exception that they put into the MDH guidance is that if a positive student is wearing a mask well and is next to another student wearing a mask, if they are within three to six feet, they would not be required to quarantine unless they have symptoms. So that's the new parameter that they put in place as an exception for quarantining recommendations.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Before I finish up, is there any questions, any you have for Bernadette?
I think a common question is, is that we're, we're requiring mask-wearing in schools. I know there'll be kids and parents asking about recess or outdoor sports, and would that, would they be willing, ability to not have a mask on outside?
Masks are not recommended to be worn outside.
So I think it's very, very important that our community and our staff and the families, everybody understands what we're doing here today. We are asking that everybody wears a mask inside of our buildings at the start of the school year. As we just discussed, that may not last very long, the mask mandate. We don't know. It's going to be dependent on numbers and science. We are not talking about how things are going to be for the whole remainder of the rest of the year. We're just talking about how we're starting out the school year. Dr. Battle and I have discussed this at length and with the Advisory Council. We understand that there is challenges for folks in the learning environment. Our number one objective always is the safety of our students. Closely tied behind that, what we're trying to do is, as Director Chester mentioned, is we're trying to provide a learning environment where kiddos are in their seats, learning in a traditional environment, Monday through Friday for the full school day. And we're able to offer extracurricular activities, and we're able to offer fall sports and all the other benefits of a school system. In order to do that, we need to keep our schools open. And so closely behind these, really what we're talking about here is not necessarily about the individual public or individual student's safety situation, but it's about the fact that we don't create a, a large-scale spreading environment within our schools. Because if we do have students that are unmasked next to another student that's unmasked, and they become sick, we're going to have to start shutting things down. And we may not have a football season, we may not have school classroom, we might have to shut buildings down. And the simple thing we can do is ensure that everybody's wearing a mask. We also appreciate, as I said, that we, that this is not where we were last year. It's a little bit different. We have a lot of vaccinated folks in our population now. And we've learned a lot more about the benefits of when and where and mask. And again, if we keep our eye on that target of not creating a super-spreader environment and not so much focusing on punishing or going after individual circumstances. So as we mentioned, recess, get out there, take the mask off, get some fresh air, run around, play, other outside activities. I've encouraged Dr. Battle to, to work with our staff to understand that there, there are gray boundaries to this rule. So, you know, if a teacher has an opportunity to be away from other students and other, on their own individually, take the mask off and take a breath. If a, if a custodial person's cleaning a building at night, they don't need to be wearing a mask if they're in there by themselves. That just doesn't, that's not stopping a super-spreader event. That, it's about the individual. Speech therapy, if it makes more sense to have, to be able to see the student's face, take a mask off. So we are asking that we mandate the mask in the building, but we're, this is, we're doing this with soft, a soft touch. And again, we want to be very clear, this is just to begin the start of the school year. Okay? Anything you'd like to add, Dr. Battle?
Yeah, Chair Miller, to read the exact language of, therefore it be resolved, so it's clear what I'm asking.
Yes, you can read it on the resolution, absolutely, yes, for clarification.
So I'm asking that you would allow me, as the superintendent, that you would direct me to implement the following health and safety measures to open the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year. All staff, students, and visitors within independent school District one ninety-one buildings must wear a mask regardless of vaccination status as recommended in the CDC guidance for COVID nineteen prevention in K-12 schools, with exceptions or accommodations allowed as outlined by the Minnesota Department of Health. Section two, you are authorizing me after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board to select and implement different health and safety measures for the school district or any specific school buildings without school board action if I reasonably believe that prompt implementation of different health and safety measures is necessary and that constraints of time and public and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The health and safety measures selected and implemented by me, the superintendent, shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with me, the superintendent, and appropriate school district staff and public health officials deem it in the best interest or the school district, excuse me, the best interests of the school district and its students to implement different health and safety measures. And section three, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board regarding the school district's effort to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the Minnesota Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health, respectively.
Okay. Thank you. Any final comments or questions about the?
I just have one clarification. That last section, providing regular updates, you've done that pretty much every meeting over the last year and a half. Can I assume that regular updates is that, that's what that means?
Yes. So, the COVID-19 report will come back, and we'll have Bernie, as always, the featured guest, and other staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I also, before we finally wrap this up, I just, I do want to acknowledge the extensive work that's gone into this. To Dr., or Dr. Director Hume's commentary earlier, this was not an easy decision. I appreciate that. It is a decision being made by this board, just to be clear. And the buck stops here. We'll go on here in a minute. And thank you especially to Bernie for the work you put in and for answering the questions this evening. All right, so we'll take a vote on the rec.
We're going to do a roll call?
Roll call.
Do we need to, or is, okay. Very good. Go for it.
Potter?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Said?
Aye.
Wurp?
Aye.
Hume?
Aye.
Very well, the resolution passes. Okay. The next item for tonight is to approve the 2021-22 Student Handbook. Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, the microphone is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and Directors of the Board, for the opportunity to present to you, coming to you this evening to seek approval on the 2021-2022 Student Handbook. Board members may recall, last year, we did have some substantial changes to our student handbook, particularly in the behavior matrix towards the back. Certainly, what you're seeing before you is significantly pared down. There are just dates and updates, an updated welcome from Dr. Battle, and one really substantive change that I'll point out to you, which is, at the bottom of the first column on page six, which is language that reads, "School administration may establish reasonable directives and guidelines which address specific needs of the school district, such as use of tape in lockers, standards of cleanliness and care, posting of pin-ups and posters which may constitute sexual harassment, et cetera." Again, that pertains to lockers. Our policy committee will remember, this is actually language that was in Policy 502 about search and seizure. The language just seemed ill-placed for that particular policy. It was almost out of context for what the purpose of that policy was. Did believe that it was a better fit just to move that language from policy into the handbook. So, this is taken verbatim from Policy 502. That was recently updated by the board and moved here instead. And so, that is the summary of the changes, and the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the 2021-22 Student Handbook.
Thank you. I will take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The motion passes. Thank you. All right. Now on to approve, on a first-reading basis, Policies 503 Student Attendance and 609 Intra-District Transfers. Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to bring forward the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. I wanted to just share with you the review of the policies, 509.5 for intra-district transfers or variance enrollments. We reviewed this policy with the understanding of how we would include or the impact it would have with our new Virtual Academy School. And the changes in the language are to recognize that the Virtual Academy School does not have its own default attendance area, so that all students who enroll in the Virtual Academy School are doing so under the variance policy. And so, the enrollment into the Virtual Academy, K through 12, is through the variance policy and variance procedures and protocols that we would follow for that. So, section two, paragraph B1, you will see that we have identified that for the purpose of this policy, the Virtual Academy exists outside of all other attendance areas or boundaries in the district. The only other language then that we wanted to look at was, we wanted to replace the word "building" with "school," making sure that it was inclusive of the virtual school as well. So, I would recommend those changes. In section D, there is an addition that you may address the needs of a physical school versus the virtual school in different ways.
Excellent. Thank you. I will take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll do our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The motion passes. All right. Then on to the next item, approve on a first-reading basis, changes to Policy 516, Student Medication.
If we want to look back at the, there's two policies.
Oh, I, do we need to, I didn't, I thought the recommendation was to comment.
Recommendation is for both. The language in the, in the attendance policy also just reflects the language for Virtual Academy and eliminates the need for them to be physically present.
Okay. Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we will switch, I went back here. Prove on a first reading, approve on a first-reading basis, changes to Policy 516, Student Medication. Joining us for this is Stephanie White, Director of Student Support Services.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Miller, and school board members, and Dr. Battle. I'm here tonight to review the updates that we did on Policy 516. There are several changes in this policy, most of which are just cleaning up our language to align with the MSB recommendations that came out. I'd like to point out two key areas that update and make us more reflective of our practices. First is the very last section, and it's the biggest change to the policy. It talks about our procedures regarding unclaimed drugs and medications. And most of the time, this is applied to the end of the school year, when we have medications still in our health offices, and we need to figure out the best procedure in order to deal with those. And we have a strong procedure in place, and this is very reflective of that, the addition to the policy. Once this is passed fully, we'll update that procedure to match exactly to what the policy is. The second is just the keeping of the epinephrine and the key word, it's section K, right above that very last section. Keyword there is "may." We don't have epinephrine in stock in case we need that. It's under prescription, attached to specific student needs. But this keeps this option open, and that would be if an opportunity came to us, that we would be able to staff our health offices to have that on hand. But currently, we don't have the conditions for many reasons. But we didn't, we wanted to keep that in the policy.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. I'll take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this?
I just, I have a quick question. If the school were to have epinephrine, how do we obtain that?
Oftentimes, I think in the original intent of adding that to a policy such as this, it would be partnering maybe with a community partner, with a manufacturing company. But those opportunities aren't here for us right now, and we have not chosen to pursue that as well.
So, and then, would that be something, because I'm trying to think, because I'm thinking it's fairly expensive?
Yeah.
So, how would, how would we, if that were the case, how would that be addressed?
Yes. That's one of the barriers that, you know, I think stopped districts like ours from moving forward with that. It would be really partnering with somebody to help us provide that. You know, the other factors we consider is who's staffing our, our health offices, and who is comfortable and has a capacity to make a decision that, you know, that a student would be having an allergic reaction for the very first time, and the appropriate response would be epinephrine.
Okay.
And so, you know, we're not even, you know, for many of those reasons that you're thinking of, you know, we're not, we're not ready to do that or in a position to do that. But we may do that. If, if an opportunity came and we felt that that was the best thing for our students and families, we would consider it at that time.
Have we ever had an incident where we required, or I mean, like where somebody had some sort of, like we needed to call 911 because they were in anaphylactic shock and they, they needed epinephrine? Has that?
So, and Bernie's in the house, so she can answer. But, so we have many students who have allergic reactions and have under prescription epinephrine, right? And so, we've had very serious situations where our health department has responded to that, for sure. Have we had students where we suspect that's what's happening? Yes, for sure.
Okay.
For sure. And with a variety of responses.
So, we could see a need that that could be something beneficial to have here?
Potentially. But right now, what's working for us is that parent partnership with our health department and our nurses, and that seems to be working very successfully with us.
Okay. So, just making sure that the students we know, are aware, have that need, they have the EpiPens or whatever they need here?
Yep. Yes.
All right. All right.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none, I will take a vote on the recommendation in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Well, the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we will move to approve the 2021-2022 Headway contract. Presenting tonight will be Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
Thank you. Each year, we have, we have provided mental health support in our schools for a number of the past few years. And so, here again tonight, Director Stephanie White has worked with Headway to bring forward this agreement, which calls for services within the 21-22 school year, not to exceed the total of $300,000. And with that, we would have 10 therapists to be co-located in schools, and two of them would be providing services for our Burnsville High School. One therapist would provide services for each of the two middle schools. And six therapists will provide services in the elementary schools, including two split positions, which will be determined prior to the beginning of the school year, dependent upon the enrollment numbers. As we take a look at this particular agreement, it looks very similar in nature to the one you've seen in the past year, although I expect that the services provided will look different than they did this past year, just because of the proximity of therapists with students and the timing, right? So, with that, I think that the recommendation here is that the Board of Education approve the agreement for mental health services with Headway Emotional Health Services Incorporated for the 21-22, 2021-22 school year for a total of $300,000, and authorize the Executive Director of Business Services to execute the agreement.
Thank you. I will take a motion on the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. How were, how, how did you guys choose how many counselors to have in each school? To me, it would, it would, to just have one counselor for the middle, both middle schools, when that's the most need that a lot of our students need is during the middle school years?
I think it's one each.
Oh, one each. Okay. All right. Thank you for the.
The answer that Lisa said is correct. It's one each. But we've been benefiting through interns that work at that middle level, and so, that's helped us to meet the needs, along with one full-time therapist. They've typically, since I've been here, had an intern as well. So, it's like having, you know, two therapists, or at least 1.5.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, last that we vote on the recommendation in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Very well. Next, we will move to approve a contract with Inver Hills, post-secondary enrollment options. Again, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
At a previous meeting, we had a similar-type agenda item before you for Norman Dell Community College. And so, it is time to do the Inver Hills Community College, the rate of $225 per credit hour for the purposes of the post-secondary enrollment options, services, is what it has been for a number of years. So, we're pleased to see that. This agreement is for the 21, sorry, the 2021 through 2022 school year, and it seems very similar in nature to the one, the agreements you've had in the past. They have asked for this to be signed on DocuSign. So, therefore, the recommendation reads that the Board of Education approve the income contract with the state of Minnesota, acting through its Board of Trustees of the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities on behalf of Inver Hills Community College for PSEO for the 2021-2022 school year, and authorize the Executive Director of Business Services to execute the agreement.
Okay. I'll take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
I'm pleased to see the amount is the same. That was my, that was going to be my one question.
All right. Well, I'm pleased to see that we continue this relationship. It's been very positive for the district. All right. Seeing no further questions or comments, we'll take a vote on the motion in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Burnsville High School Scoreboard Recommendation. I will be presenting this recommendation for motion. As we discussed at a previous workshop, we have a option in front of us to purchase the scoreboard. It was, it has been owned by Alumni Foundation, and they wish to sell it to us. The only note change from the previous conversations is that the foundation received a, well, they received a payment on advertising that they hadn't adjusted in before. They're generous enough to add that to the, to take away from the purchase requested price. So, it went from $175,000 down to $165,000, $165,000. So, decreasing the amount that they're asking from us. I'm going to read the recommendation, and so, whereas Richard Promigé, on behalf of the Black and Gold Alumni Foundation, has made an offer to the school district to sell it, the electronic scoreboard currently placed on school district property with all related structures and anchor points for a purchase price of $165,000. Now, therefore, the school board authorizes the superintendent and the director of business services in consultation with school. services in consultation with school district legal counsel to pursue an asset purchase agreement for the sale and purchase of the scoreboard for a purchase price not to exceed 165,000, and including all their appropriate terms, conditions, and contingencies, and directs the superintendent that if proposed asset purchase agreement is reached, the written agreement shall be submitted to the school board for consideration and possible approval. So, this, to clarify, this recommendation is to put forward an actual purchase agreement, and then we will bring that once more for finalization to our, for us, for approval. So, I will take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments on the motion tonight?
I'd have, this might be a Lisa question, but can you just remind me, where are we getting the 165,000?
This would be a capital purchase. It would also fall within the parameters of the 2015 bond issuance that we had with the review and comment and the language within the ballot, so there's that choice for the board.
That's the technology, love me.
No, no.
No. 2015?
Building bonds.
Oh, oh, okay, thank you.
We did the renovation at Burnsville High School.
Correct.
We still have funds remaining.
That's what, that's what covered all the costs of the landscaping that went around it, and it was just the timing of which putting that in at that time fit, you know, with everything else that was going on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, seeing no further questions or comments, we will take a vote on the motion in front of us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. All right, the next item is approve board full year 2022 goals. Again, myself presenting, we did go over this in workshops, so I'm not going to get down into the weeds on it too much, but the recommendation is to approve the goals as posted in our agenda for tonight. Take a motion?
So moved. Second.
Second, okay, very good. All right, any questions or comments on the item before us?
Well, I'm just noticing, sorry, this must be my night to notice these things. There are two goal ones on the background paper. I mean, they're both important, but...
So, we can make a change to that?
You'll go one and go one plus one.
Or just go.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I will take a vote for the motion in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. And last item and new business tonight, there's been a request put to us to name the Burnsville High School tennis courts. Brian Gershich, Assistant Superintendent, presenting.
Thank you again. Back to you to present, as noted in the Board Book attachments, Principal Helkey did receive a request to name the Burnsville High School tennis coach, I'm sorry, tennis courts, after a former teacher and coach for the Burnsville School District, as noted in there, it's Richard Hoynish. Naming of buildings and facilities is obviously a pretty big deal in any community, and those names last, Pates Stadium, Maraz Center, et cetera, are a big deal. You know, commensurate with that is the fact that this is board policy, and the board does have the sole authority to actually come through and accept naming for buildings, governed again by a policy that's in Board Book, Policy 899. Per that policy, the board reserves all right in naming school buildings, and if you read the General Statement of Policy, Paragraph 3, "A school board may establish a committee, including five to seven residents, which will receive suggestions from the community, staff, and students. This committee shall be representative of the entire district, and will propose a name or names of the school board." I guess it's a way of saying, we're not speaking in favor or against the proposal, but simply to say a sustainable precedent and practice in naming facilities does seem to be, our recommendation would be to follow the policy and to have the board expect that we would have a committee to vet through that. I think there's significant information out there. I think we need to make sure that we understand what we're doing. Certainly, there may be other names that surface. I'm not saying that this isn't the right individual, this just happens to be the first individual, perhaps, that came forward and put forth a name. So, a committee that could fully vet that through, make us feel good about the recipient and their contributions to our district, seems like a way we would want that to happen, regardless of the name that's coming forward for our district. And so, I would just outline what I would see what the board's options are with this particular proposal, the one that we are recommending, is that the board would take action to expect the formation of a committee to review and come back to this board with their findings and recommendation. Alternately, alternatively, the board could take action as the proposal exists and approve the naming rights as it's proposed by Principal Helkey, or the board could reject all the options and simply say, "We're not interested in renaming facilities at this time." Again, I think in order to just look at this and say, "What would we want to do to be fair, equitable, and make sure that we're doing the right things in vetting through this," it does seem to be prudent if we're going to consider name changes or naming facilities to have a committee, again, do that research. We have so much information available on candidates and others to put this out there and make sure people realize we're considering that, seems to be, again, prudent. So, with that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the formation of a committee to review the request to name the Burnsville High School tennis courts.
All right, I'll take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? Yes?
I didn't see anything. Is there a timeline you have in mind for this committee's work?
Yeah, good, good question. I think if this is what the board would approve, I'd be asking Principal Helkey to form that committee sometime over the course of this fall, and be back probably within the quarter. I just want to make sure that we understand where our priorities are going into the fall, that this may or may not be a committee wanting this kind of representation that can formulate quickly, so my hope would be to have something by the, over the course of the first quarter.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the subject? Again, just to be very, very clear, we're not naming anything yet, this is simply to form a committee to consider the naming, the request of the naming. All right, we will vote on the motion in front of us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you, the motion passes. All right, that ends our regular scheduled meeting for tonight. I do need to ask for an adjournment, right, or given that we're back to normal rules now, so. I will take a motion to adjourn to a workshop.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, we are adjourned. Let's say we're back here at the top of the hour at 8 o'clock for, to begin our workshop discussion this evening.
Sounds good.